Uh-oh, play the wrong one.
Yep.
Oh, hey, this is you.
It is.
And Craig isn't visible.
Okay. I'm gonna get in trouble for it with tonight.
Okay, we are recording.
We are recording, great.
Okay.
Well, let me get started. First of all, it's, today is February the 3rd, 2020. It's a matter of fact, according to our watches and clocks here, it's six thirty-three. We're starting a little late, but we are starting. I would like to call this meeting to order and make sure that we are declaring that we have a quorum present. We have three members of our board here, out of the five. Because our chair is not present here today, it is required by us to vote for someone to be nomi- first of all, to nominate, and then for vote, to vote that person to be the chair for the day.
I make a motion to nominate Francois to chair the meeting tonight.
I second.
Okay, then we take a vote on this here? Anybody who's, everybody in favor?
On the point of order, you have to accept the nomination.
I'm sorry, I accept the nomination, thank you very much, appreciate it. That's why we have you, to keep me honest.
[laughing]
And can I, at this point in time, ask for, show hands for those who say that the nomi- that the motion is the one that they have indicated as such?
I vote in favor.
Three, nobody against. So, at this point in time, I would like to introduce the board, who is here.
We don't know who we're recording to.
I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I'm introducing quickly the board. It's myself, I'm Franz Schweiger, and at this point in time, I am going to be sharing the planning board meeting of today. Next to me, I have a good friend, Bill Homans. Bill, and next to him is Mr. John Demalia. As per regulations, we do want to make sure that we're stating that the planning board meetings are all broadcast live and they are digitally recorded. At this point in time, we are going to state also that anyone wishing to speak on a matter that is not up for a public hearing may speak now, and if they indicated a desire to address the board on the sign-in sheet, that we will, at that point in time, allow them to speak to that effect. Do we have anything to this matter?
We have two. We have Lauren Moreno.
Yes.
Would you like to come to the table?
Come to the table?
You may, yes, please.
Matty, where?
Anywhere.
Okay.
Thank you very much for attending, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, my name's Lauren Moreno. I actually own Hubbardston Vet Clinic for about six and a half years now. The building-
Can you give us the address?
Forty-eight Gardner Road in Breezy Hill Corners. Um, the building's not been well cared for for a while, and we've been working with the owners to try and purchase it. It has fallen through a number of times. So, there was a parcel of land, or is a parcel of land just south of that plot, eight acres, that I'm in the process of purchasing to build a vet clinic, and potentially bring, there's a groomer next door to me now, potentially bring the groomer with me, and potentially one other office. And I guess my purpose for coming here is to see if there's anything that you guys would see negatively affecting me to purchase and to build before I actually purchase and pay for the land.
I believe it's a buildable lot.
Is it in the commercial district?
Can I add with this? I actually wanted to speak on, with Lauren's behalf, because I'm her buyer's agent.
Did you sign it?
I did sign it.
She does have it on here, she was just-
Perfect. Would you like to join the, uh-
Yeah.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. So, we've already, Lauren has already seen, and we've met with the building inspector, and we've filled out a zoning determination. So zoning determination for the building inspector is that it is right under use, right by use, I should say, for what she wants to do. We're in the process of waiting for him to sign it. She just put the fee in last week. So we do expect the meeting was a yes and a go-ahead, but it was brought to our attention that in the Hubbardston zoning, it does say that above uses and subsections G through R, which would be, we would be actually N, would be subject to site plan approval under Article Nine of the Hubbardston zoning bylaws, and subject to an environmental and community impact analysis. There's, it's pretty detailed in there, there's quite a bit to it. Lauren's in the process, the closing date is coming up. This certainly won't happen within the closing date, and I think her reason for being here today is to just let you be aware of what she's going to be doing, and if there's, again, anything that would come to mind negatively impact her decision on continuing to purchase the property, because it will be a big investment, although it's a great investment, and we feel that it's nice for the town to have right there, rather than them to go away because of them not making a deal with the current owners of Breezy Hill.
Well, I think that's awesome, because we really wanna keep business in town and build business, so I think that's really, really good.
So, can I ask a quick question? First of all, how long have you been already a, how long have you had your business here in town?
I, I purchased it about six and a half years ago. The business has been there for, I'm gonna say fifteen, fifteen years?
So you assumed the business from somebody else?
I did, yes.
Okay, there you go. And so, as it's, so your clientele is clearly Hubbardston clientele plus folks from other places?
Correct.
Okay. So you are serving the community-
Correct.
From that perspective, which is a great thing to have. What is confusing to me is, is you mentioned forty-eight Gardner Road. What is the quote-unquote address of the new place?
It'll be thirty-six Gardner Road, which I believe Lauren has a plot plan too, if you wanna just, did I give that to you?
You did give it to me.
Take it back, okay.
I think that at this-
So you can see, it's just a one lot before where she is right now, so it's in between the pallet place and where she is right now.
So this is currently where we're at?
Right.
And then this is the pallet, yes.
Yeah.
All right, so I've seen the for sale sign out there.
That's it.
So that's actually where the old golf course used to be?
Correct.
To manipulate golf.
Okay.
So, let me get the feeling for this. Are you here because you just wanna see if there's anything else you might have to do?
Yes, like what red flags would come up?
She wants to know if there's gonna be a big problem that she's gonna encounter after she buys it.
Correct.
As far as the site plan, and I, is it a special permit as well? I apologize, I am not, I don't have an infringing-
No special permit.
Okay, it does say site plan. I'm looking, trying to look at it now. I'm not, I can't, at the moment, say that there's no red flags, but a site plan doesn't necessarily have to be, as far as I understand, and the board, of course, has a right to research this themselves, wouldn't be necessarily before you buy. It would be, basically, we wanna make sure that whatever you're bringing into that place does not provoke, propose, propose a environmental impact that would be negative on the community, you're not dealing with toxic waste or anything like that, or community impact analysis, you aren't bringing in anything that maybe the town doesn't wanna see. So it's not a matter of, they'd be giving you a checkmark or an X mark, they just wanna review it. They want you to bring these reports before them, and the site plan, so they know that parking has been taken care of. Obviously, the building department would take care of that as well. But environmental and community impact is always about making sure that the businesses that come into town have sort of been vetted, so that they're not violating any of the visions of the town of Hubbardston, but it sounds like you've already been here.
So, I, I guess, and that really brings my more fundamental question. Your plan is, is to transfer the type of business to a new location.
Correct.
You're not adding anything to the type of business that you're doing, or if you are, can you describe that to us?
So for me, no, it would be exactly the same.
Yes.
The groomer that currently resides next to me, it would be exactly the same. My husband owns a business, and we've talked about potentially having him have some space there too. He owns Holden Hearing Aid Center, so he's an audiologist. It would be a professional building.
I think that would be great to have an audiologist.
That'd be awesome.
We're all getting of that age where we can maybe use an audiologist.
Uh-huh.
Yes, I was about to do that myself. No, I, I mean, from my perspective, this is my fundamental question. You're not changing the type of business that you're currently conducting, adding anything to that effect. I mean, you're not adding a foundry, or you're doing some, something else that is not out of the realm of what you are currently doing or participating in from a business perspective. Neither is the other person or persons that you are currently, who are with you in, in Breezy Hill. So the only person who might be added down the road would be the use of an additional office space in order to be able to do audiological work.
Yes.
Okay, but other than that, at this point in time, there's none.
Correct.
And also, there, is there anything in your operation that comes under any type or any hazardous waste or anything for medical operation? So, that would be another thing, but if it's already being done-
Correct. I mean, we have, we have medical waste, but all of that, yeah, it's all-
And that is similarly handled, it would be, similarly handled in the new location as you would in the old facility, old location. I think one of the cautions I always say is, is when you have, you know, a new piece of land and so forth, there's always the issue of septic and water, and do you have all the necessary capabilities within the existing land? And so that's certainly something that you, as a potential buyer of a piece of land, may have to consider as you make that. So, that is not for us to tell you, but rather for you yourself to keep in mind. At this point in time, I mean, I open it up to you both gentlemen, I mean, you had a very recent experience where you also, through your family, had a business that was open, as well as the experiences that you have. I mean, please comment if you feel and see any potential issues or encumbrances that may be considered.
I looked at purchasing that piece of land ourselves, but the cost to build the building ended up being too high for it to work for our business. But, yeah, I think it was a great piece of land, it looked like it perked, they did go well.
It's all well.
Yeah, I mean, it's all cleared mostly, so.
The only thing I would suggest is maybe run it by the Conservation Commission, you know, just to make sure. I'm, I'm pretty sure we know the property pretty well up there, but I'd always ask.
Right, haven't taken a look yet.
Yeah, because that way there, you're covering all your bases, you know, before you put that investment into it.
And we would be copying the environmental impact that you, the report you've sent to us to the Concom, but it's always a good idea to talk to them in advance, and it would probably be before you open business that we would need that site plan reviewed. So, I don't know that we need it before you break ground, but the planning board at least has to have it prior to this part of business.
Yeah, it sounds like there's a little bit of a timeframe too, sixty-five days, because some things have to be, the site, the site review anyway, to be published, publicated.
Exactly, so you wanna make sure you give yourself a good buffer, because we have, they also have been some time to write the decision on the site plan review, so you don't wanna, yeah.
But you really can't start it until you have an engineer to do all of this, because they-
Correct, it's a big investment.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a domino, and that's why I think Lauren, it was good to come here to get a positive feeling before the big investment starts.
Right, I think it's awesome.
Yeah, I agree.
So, from my perspective, the only other thing to be aware of is, is you only have three members here, and you don't have the full board-
Correct.
-to chime in. I do believe that due diligence is always done by the other two members in terms of keeping up as to what has happened in these board meetings, and I'm sure that they will review this here, and if they had any kind of caution concern or something of that nature, post this meeting at this point in time, they may, at that point in time, point this out to you via Christina, and, and let you know. At this point in time, there's really nothing that I would say comes to our mind.
Okay.
No.
I always indicate that, the, the rule of thumb is, is that you as a buyer, which is what you're doing right now, you're doing your due diligence, you should always understand the risk is really on your side.
Yes.
But I think you're doing the right thing, and that from our perspective, there's nothing that stands out, and the only other point would be is, is for us to maybe just send a quick note to Craig and to-
Alice.
And to Alice, to just to let them know if they have any kind of-
Right.
Issue, concerns, that they would be, it'd be good for them to-
That's my contact information. If you wouldn't mind leaving yours?
Okay.
I have it actually here, but if you wouldn't mind just adding an email address or a phone number.
I can give you a business card if you mind.
Fantastic.
Okay.
That would be excellent. Any other questions, concerns, or things that you would like to bring up?
Awesome, excellent.
I see you have already your future vet helpers with you.
Just half of them, but yes.
Oh, half of them, that's okay. Well, I'm, I'm very encouraged to hear that you're looking into this here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. Is there anybody else that has signed up that would wish to speak on a matter that is not up for a public hearing? Do we have anybody else?
No.
I don't think so, right? So, in general, any matters up for public hearing will have time during the discussion for our public comment. Public comments may be limited, and depending on the number of members or the public who wish to speak. Also, there are, there will be a separate public comments period at the end of the meeting if, if needed, so if anybody would like to stay afterwards to continue that discussion. And that, in general, just as a reminder, any resident may contact the planning board office or the chair for place and future agendas if they have any issue that they wish to speak on with the board about at any length. So we do encourage that mode of communication to happen as soon as possible. Our third item on the agenda this evening are the minutes, minutes of December the eighteenth, two thousand twenty. They were handed out, or sent, I'm sorry, not sent. They are available to us, and I believe that they are available to all of you.
Yes, I believe they were on the email, I'm just, it's been so long.
There we go. Sorry, go ahead.
I read all the ones that I received that I was there.
Okay.
I, I read them as well.
So, I believe that at this point in time, or do you need time to review them again, or?
No, I'm, I'm in.
Any-
I just wanna make sure it was here at the meeting.
Changes, questions, or concern, and even if you weren't, I think you can still-
Yes, you can.
We can vote on them.
And I've, I've read them all, so.
I as well.
Okay, I will entertain motions to accept this.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for the December eighteenth, two thousand twenty, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
And I will second that.
Okay, I will take at this point in time a vote to accept this motion. Can I have a show of hands, please?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Can I ask that we adjust our agenda to take care of Mr. Hume first?
Oh, he's next.
Oh, I thought New Templeton Road was-
It's postponed until March. Eventually, they came in in January, and then it turns out they were out of town in February.
Oh, okay.
So, they have to wait till March now for their ANR.
Okay. So yes, to your point, we did have a agenda item originally that was slated, which was the discussion of an ANR for five Temple, New Templeton Road. This has been postponed until March the fourth, so anybody interested to participate in the meeting for that, please make sure that you are attending that meeting on March the fourth. Action items at this point in time, B, we do have Mr. Hume from the MRPC, who's presenting on the timeline for the master plan chapters, the DLTA and the EEOEA grants, as well as finalizing the master plan in two thousand twenty. I thank you for coming, and please ask you to join us here at the table.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I do-
Can you go together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you would like to join, and if it's related to the same matter, absolutely.
This, this is Jonathan Vogels. He's been with Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission for about three months now or so.
Three months.
So he's a new hire, and he's gonna be working with me on the master plan, another person, Karen Chapman too, at Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission. And I did have a handout here that I wanted to give to the board members, and it's about a recent grant that the Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission received on behalf of the town of Hubbardston. We put together a grant application quite some time ago, it was back in the summer, probably June or so, for master plan chapters for the town of Hubbardston, since we're working on your master plan. We put together a grant for forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And on January second, we were notified that we were awarded to do the master plan chapters, which is tremendous news.
Wow. When was that?
We got notified, yeah, January, early January.
Congratulations, I think that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Great news.
It's fantastic.
Good for the town.
So, the chapters that were funded are statement of goals and objectives, transportation element, services and facilities, open space recreation, and housing. So, now that you've got those chapters funded, and you've already got two other chapters done previously, economic development in historic and cultural chapters, that leaves land use chapter and implementation chapter that needs to be funded. The town, I did receive a district local technical assistance application from your town administrator, Ryan, and he applied for the land use chapter under MRPC's DLTA programs. That's the acronym of District Local Technical Assistance, and it's gonna be reviewed tomorrow night by the planning commissioners. And if approved, which I would anticipate it would, it certainly qualifies under our DLTA program, that would be funded as well for MRPC's time to do the land use chapter for you, which would be great.
What's the timeline by which they make that decision? Is it immediately during the meeting, or is it post-meeting?
Immediately at the meeting.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So we should know right at-
Sooner than later.
Right about, by tomorrow evening. Very good.
So I could notify Christina Friday morning, or?
Not past the launch.
And hopefully more good news.
More good news, I hope. That'd be really nice.
Okay.
So, that would leave your implementation chapter, and your town administrator, and Christina did ask for a quote for what that would cost the community to do, and we quoted eleven thousand dollars, I think it was eleven thousand, was it, Christina?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, but we're-
For both or for each?
That was just for implementation, in order to finish it.
Okay, fourteen K.
Yeah, the land use is under the DLTA, there won't, there won't be any out-of-pocket.
No, no, the, so I, I heard, I heard land use, we'll, we'll know tomorrow.
You'll know, yeah.
And then the implementation fourteen K, was there another one I thought I heard?
No, it was just the implementation, that's the final chapter.
Final one, yeah.
Got you.
Yep, and then also they'll be putting the entire thing together for us. They won't just be doing one chapter, it'll be integrating the whole thing together.
Wonderful.
Yeah, exactly. So, we've come up with a timeline. Now, I can start with the land use though, because that's gonna be under a DLTA, and like I said, I anticipate that you are, it's highly likely that it will get approved by the planning commissioners. That has to be done by next Christmas, according to the Commonwealth Massachusetts, that, but we would, would get it done sooner than that. But that would be the, the absolute deadline for that chapter. For the funding agency, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, for those chapters that we got the forty-eight thousand doll, forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for to do, they want it all done by June of two thousand twenty-one. That's easy to do, we can get it done sooner than that.
Great.
It'd be nice to get it all done in two thousand twenty. Jonathan's already gathering a lot of statistics for the transportation chapter and for services and facilities, so we're working away already on it, which is good, great. The, on page two, you can see the statement of goals and objectives timeline there. We wanted to have two public forums to gain public input from the community, and it'd be great if we could do it in March, we could do it in April. Would need to work with, with you folks, and you could, folks would need to pinpoint a location to have it. Usually, when we put on these public forums for master plans, in a smaller community, we usually get between eighteen to thirty people. We like it, we like it on cable TV too, if we can do it.
We'd have to do it here, then.
I would, I would, I would think so, and I mean, we have had larger forums of individuals who have not only been in this room, but also in the adjoining room, or, or the adjoining-
So we could do that, 'cause we'll put up, there's a screen in the other room that would actually show what, what's happening in here too. So, this, that would work.
This being a public, this being a wa, a, a meeting where we're inviting the public, we need to also make sure that we are doing this in a anticipatory manner, and the right type of dissemination of the fact that this is taking place has to be public, it has to be properly publicized or published, right?
Right. The open forum would have to publish, yes.
Right.
And we would need some documentation in advance of that meeting, so that we could circulate it to the public.
Absolutely.
So that there's a concept of what they're coming here to comment on.
Yes.
So, is there a, is, is there a possibility for you to have that not only in paper, but also electronically? And I'm wondering, and this is just a thought, is there something that we could make available in the website for folks to be able to see?
Yep, we could put it on the planning board website as well.
Exactly, and sort of like, again, this is not what it is, this is, this, I mean, this is what we're gonna be discussing. That's what I'm basically indicating here. I think it would be very advantageous to have that available. A lot of folks are using that medium as a means by which they're communicating-
Right.
-and getting communicated to.
Perfect. So, we could come up with a flyer, like a draft flyer for the advertising.
Sure.
We'd come up with hard copies, electronic, as you were indicating.
Sure.
So you could put it on your website.
That would be excellent, and Christina would be the right point person to not only receive it, but to administer it and get it up on the website.
Terrific, okay. And when would you like to have a public forum? Generally, it takes, need a minimum of like four weeks to really prepare for it, would tell you a press release too.
So I'm taking out my phone, just because of the calendar. That's the only purpose and reason that I'm using the phone for time and for calendar purposes, so I have a better sense of what we're talking about. So you say four weeks roughly, right?
Yeah.
So given the fact that we are ready right now in the first week in February, March, when is, when is our vacation week for, you know?
Third week in February?
Third week.
Third week in February.
And then we have one other one in April.
School.
Oh no, we have, what, do you know what the school April vacation is, or?
It's whatever day the holiday is, I believe, on the month.
That's okay.
The reason I'm asking is, is because oftentimes we have a lot of parents-
That take off on those weeks.
Leave during that period of time.
Yeah.
And I think it would be-
Week of the twentieth.
Twentieth of-
April.
Of April?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Wouldn't April be more fitting?
Either early April, just before, would probably be a, a good time.
Okay.
Because it would, I think at least, give us a sense that we have a potential better chance to also include parents who are instrumental in understanding what this master plan is going to be bringing. So I think it would be nice if we could maybe target, say, the week of the sixth of April. We have a meeting on that week, no, we have, yeah, we have, is our week on, is our meeting on April first, April 4th, or is it on April the eighth?
It will be the first Wednesday of April, which will be the first.
First April 4th.
Um, the alternative is we could have this at a planning board meeting.
We could, in theory, do that, yes. It would make it much longer, but we could focus our attention on that.
Approximately, how long do you anticipate a public forum like this taking?
Two hours.
Two hours, we probably don't want to pair it with a public board meeting.
Not at the same time, no. This will probably be a separate night.
Okay, though if the planning board did attend, we'd still have to post it as a planning board meeting, as the single item agenda.
We could, exactly. So I would suggest we have our planning board meeting on the first, and then subsequently on the eighth, assuming that there's no conflict, that we may just target that as a date and confirm that, assuming that that is available.
Okay.
If that is workable to you, gentlemen, then I would suggest that Christina give you these as dates to present. And again, we will communicate this here to Alice, and let her know that's kind of what we are thinking of, and then formalize it via a communication back to you.
Terrific.
Then we can get that moving.
That works.
Sounds like a plan?
So, that sounds really good.
All right, good, excellent.
Great.
I think it makes sense for us to just, let's put something down on the calendar and not wait until-
Right.
Another two weeks from now.
Get it better done.
Project management one-on-one.
Then moving on to the page number three, we've got the transportation element, and Jonathan's been working on this, and would like to meet with the planning board in, in March to present all the statistics and analysis, and the inventory and analysis stage, if possible. I mean, we could present it in ten or fifteen minutes.
That's pretty great. Uh, we typically, when you're thinking of March, I mean, our first of the, our first Wednesday of the month is the fourth of March, which is early in March.
Okay.
Is that progressive?
That's the first week.
We could do that, don't you think it'll be a good agenda?
Yeah, I'll have it, yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Let's put you tentatively in the agenda, assuming again, there's no-
Yeah.
-issues with you being able to do that date.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, and I hope I was interrupting, but for the statement of goals and objectives, will you be contacting other boards for that, like the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Okay, and then for transportation, do you have a contact with the DPW, 'cause I can get you that information?
That'd be wonderful.
Okay, I'll send you that.
That'd be wonderful. Yeah, we wanna get the right people here. Of course, it's a public meeting, we wanna get as many people as we can that are interested in the master plan.
Right, that's a very good point, absolutely.
So, then we have services and facilities at the bottom of page three and on to page four, and we're trying to set up an aggressive schedule here, so that we can get it done in two thousand twenty, and, you know, we could come and prepare something for the planning board in, in May, and once again, during the summer. Generally, we do like, one of these master plan chapters, we like at least like two meetings with the planning board. One would be to meet with you folks at the inv- One would be to meet with you folks at the inventory and analysis stage, just like with historic and cultural chapter that we did. And get all your input and then we go back to our office and come up with some draft recommendations for you.
Okay.
And then we like to present those to you.
So we're talking about a May timeline and a June timeline?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, May, the first Wednesday of the month is the sixth. So I would suggest that we already pencil that in, if that is at all possible for you to make that date.
And that's for services?
Yes.
That is for the services, and the review of the draft recommendations would be on June the third then, potentially, right?
Okay, yep. That'd be perfect.
Pencil that in, and again, we can review this here with Alice and make sure that it doesn't conflict with anybody's other.
And who would we want to have involved in services and facilities? I know there's of course Chief Hays and Chief Pro, and I'd know if we want to get the TA involved.
Probably, yeah.
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Town administrator makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Okay, TA and.
Gee, great.
Fire and police. And again, I'll get you that contact information. Again, with services, you'd probably need the DPW contact as well.
Right.
Yeah.
And then open space, I can get you the Chair of the Open Space Committee's email address.
Okay. Yeah, basically, how we're gonna, how we're gonna do the open space recreation chapter since you already have an open space recreation plan? So that actually qualifies as a master plan chapter, but how we do it is take a lot, we, we write a nice introduction and put it into master plan format. We take a lot of excerpts out of the open space recreation plan, refer to the plan itself but have a condensed version instead of something that's like a hundred or a hundred and fifty pages or something like that. We take the highlights out of the open space recreation plan.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So there we're talking about August, right?
That would be correct.
And so there again, we're pointing with August the fifth.
Should we, um.
That in.
I can create a schedule and send it out to the boards so that everyone's aware.
And just.
Yeah, see what we can do.
Put the bogeys out there.
Right.
And see what that, make sure that we have those on our radar.
Ryan and August are usually vacation week, so.
I, I understand that, and so we may have to adjust as
Right.
things are much further into the future, and so be aware that we may ask you to do something and it may change.
Not a problem. Okay, and the final chapter, housing master plan chapter. Once again, it's like your open space recreation plan, cause you have a housing production plan that you put together not too long ago, so would use a lot of the materials in the housing production plan. Actually, a housing production plan qualifies as a housing chapter, once again, just like the open space recreation plan. But we take the, the highlights out of it. And saves a lot of money. That makes it affordable, cause a lot of communities, you know, it's, it's tough to come up with the funds to do a chapter like this. So you're in, in a very advantageous position since you did a housing production plan, which is terrific.
Cool.
Okay, I mean, for all intensive purposes, what I'm seeing here is, is that we will dedicate a certain portion of this time that we have in our planning board meetings, pretty much on the, all the way up till the November timeline, as indicated through the schedules that we have.
At least once, once a month, yes.
Once a month, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah.
Question about the fourteen thousand dollars, is there something we have to appropriate the funds or that can?
For the implementation chapter, it's something that we could possibly apply to the Board of Selectmen and ask to be put on this warrant. I know the budget is closed, but because we're now trying to push the master plan and hopefully get it done in twenty twenty. Um, I did talk to Ryan and, uh, told him that, you know, he said if the board votes it, we can of course try and move it forward. It's not guaranteed that the town would be able to come up with fourteen thousand dollars
Right.
to make this happen, but it would be something we could push forward. Also, uh, wanted to remind the board that we do have a little bit in a revolving fund, not fourteen thousand dollars we couldn't fund.
So it may not have to be the whole amount, but it could be a portion of that amount.
Right, and it might be worth going to the Board of Selectmen and sort of negotiating that figure before we submitted an official warrant with regards to putting it on there so that both sides are comfortable, and maybe even the Board of Selectmen would approve it. We'd also, we could also go to the Finance Committee possibly, cause they're starting to work on the budget now.
Right.
It would just be something to work on, cause that is a, quite a bit of chunk of change to throw on the warrant at the last minute.
Yeah, it is, and, uh, let's do this here. I think, let's add this here as an agenda item, if we can for our next meeting, which is now in one week, or two, no, two weeks, two weeks from now.
Yep.
Uh, as a point of discussion, because we do need to get in front of this here.
Yes.
Given the time constraint that we have before the warrants, uh, season starts.
Opens and closes, yes.
Could we help push it forward quicker? To make a motion now to send this request to the Selectmen after this meeting tonight to please looking to get an impossible funding.
Or to put it on the Board of Selectmen's agenda, so we could go and talk to them about it.
We need a motion for that.
So the, the, the next, the next meeting that they have is.
In a second.
And again, I'm just using my calendar.
That's all right.
I thought you were taking out your checkbook and.
Oh, oh.
Oh, that would, that would be wonderful.
Negative three dollars.
Oh, you saw it, huh?
Okay, it looks like the Board of Selectmen meeting I see is March second.
Okay, so they do not have anything until then, so my suggestion would be is, is we definitely we have time, and I would like to discuss this here on the sev- on the seventeenth.
Okay.
The meeting that we have. Let's make sure that we have this on the agenda, I'm sorry, the nineteenth. And let's make sure that we have this as an agenda item, with the inclusion of the fact that we need to meet with the Select Board just to ensure that we have some wiggle room of negotiation back and forth with them.
Right.
Terms of how it is that we wanna present this here, what we are contributing from the Select, from the planning board and what other funding sources we actually require, okay?
Yes.
So that's the way we're gonna work with the, with the additional chapter that is.
See if we can do it.
Missing, okay? I mean, it would be fantastic to see this master plan finalized.
Right.
It's, it's been long, it's been in the works for a long time, and a lot of good work has been done thus far. So, not knocking it down. Excellent, thank you very much.
That's awesome. And welcome aboard.
Any additional thoughts?
Having me.
Uh, no, that, that's all I had.
Cool.
Something that's kind of master plan related. Jonathan worked on a, on a grant for the town of Hubbardston, another grant too. And it's called an MVP grant, Municipal Vulnerability.
Preparedness?
Preparedness grant. And it was just funded for twenty thousand dollars to look at all your critical facilities. Look at, um, flooding and, uh, critical infrastructure and uh, just the vulnerability in terms of mostly flooding in a community like Hubbardston. Uh, so that's.
A lot of water here.
Lot of water.
Well, there's that and there's obviously the wind factor that we have had. We've had some cyclones slash, not cyclones, I'm sorry, tornadoes. We don't have cyclones in this part of the country, but there's always the capable, the capability of, the possibility, I should say, of, of wind-related damages and water-related damages.
We've had hurricane here too, too.
We had hurricanes in this area, absolutely. I do, do remember that, uh, so it, it makes a lot of sense. And protecting our critical infrastructures are an important element, uh, in so many different areas.
Yeah.
I mean, people do not realize, I mean, yes, we do, most of us don't, on half of water, we, most of our water comes from our wells, but when we think about telephone, when we think about electricity, when we think about our roads, when we think about our even just, you know, primary, uh, health, health services, we have paramedics and police and, uh, just basic communication. Just enormous amounts of interrelated matters that need to take place, especially for a small town like ours. And given our distance to sometimes our, the centers where, for example, primary care can be granted. Uh, we're not a stone's throw away from a hospital. It does take ten miles plus to get to the nearest emergency room.
Yeah.
So it is important for us to know this here. So, and how do we get there in the event of, uh, an emergency? So thanks for bringing that up and thank you for contributing in this year.
I'm happy to do it.
Excellent.
And the good, the good news is after you finish this planning grant, which would need to be done by June thirtieth, qualifies you for brick and mortar grants that, uh, that you can get from the state. So as soon as you have this planning done, you can apply for other projects throughout the community uh, in terms of infrastructure, culverts and, uh, things like that, so it sets you up in a good position.
Good. Interesting. Do you have a list of what qualifies underneath that?
I do. Uh, I can forward it to Christina.
I think that will be very, very good, because we, we, we may be, we may be, we may be using that.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you've given some examples, but I, I'm sure that there's probably a lot of other things that we may not even think about or you have not expressed but can be potentially leveraged. People like in the DPW department, people in the Police Department, people in our Fire Department and, and so forth. I think they can all look at this here and say, this makes sense. And I'm sure that the town administrator would have his way of organizing and helping us organize this here across the multiple departments that we have.
Yes.
I mean, I would even think that a school might have some benefits out of this here, especially if there isn't, you know, because it is educational aspects in terms of safety.
Absolutely.
Sort of, uh, an interesting area. Again, thinking out of the box. Thank you very much. That's a great idea. If you can provide that list to us, uh, that would be wonderful. To Christina, obviously.
I will.
Thank Christina, that would be good.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other good news? Sounds like you got a big bag of goodies.
Well, we got, sounds like we're getting a lot of money here, so.
That's good, that's, that, I like to see it, you know? I just think my job is to bring as much money into the region as possible, because, because the smaller communities in particular really need it. So I just love seeing it.
Well, that's awesome, cause we haven't seen a lot of it coming back.
Well, and sometimes it's lost because of people just don't know.
Right.
And it's, I'm not saying that it's ignorance, it's just simply, I'm not knowing where to look for that.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's, it's just a matter of finding and having an individual with, individuals, I should say, as yourselves who can help us find that. It does basically bring back to the community, because we all are taxpayers, at the state level even, and at the federal level. So whatever can come back into the community of our taxpayers' money, I think is always, uh, well appreciated. Uh, so, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. I appreciate it, we look forward to seeing you in our next set of meetings when we.
In March.
In March. We'll see you then.
We'll be seeing a lot of them.
Yes.
I'll get you a name plaque too.
Wait a minute, took me years to get one of those.
You can borrow mine. Open your checkbook. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
This is excellent news.
Really?
We should fight it to hear this here, so.
Plus, when was the last plan approved and done? How old was it? How many years ago?
I'm sorry, the historical and cultural chap- chapter we had, Mr.
No, no, no.
Oh, that one was, um, two thousand and ten?
So this?
I believe, I'm not, no, no master plan. I don't know, I don't know.
I think it was longer than that.
I think it was. I think we were looking at thirty years or so.
I believe the next one is proposed budget.
Oh, that was the implementation chapter. That's, we're gonna be talking about that at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, because those act of need to, uh, we, we may have to work this out with the Select Board now.
Yes.
Right, which hopefully we can make it work.
Yeah, get it done.
Okay. All right, good. So the other two items that I have here are the annual report draft and the signed bylaw drafts. So, um, the planning board annual report, uh, two thousand and nineteen draft is in our share drive.
We had a couple of formatting errors, so I'm gonna ask you to forgive those, but it, the, it didn't go to PDF well.
Oh, really? Okay, so, but.
That, the information is accurate, but the formatting is a little off, so.
So you're just still, still working on this here and it, it will be presented as part of the two nineteen meeting that we have?
Yes.
Okay, same can be said for the signed bylaw?
The signed bylaw, if there's any, uh, feedback, um, obviously, we wanna try and get as much feedback as we can on the signed bylaw so that we can, before we take it to public hearing.
So at this point in time, I think, it, it, it is my understanding that it is in good enough shape that we should be able to share it with the Select Board, correct?
Not quite.
Not yet?
Uh, there's only one or two things that were not filled in. One of them is the size of illuminated signs. Um, that, in that table, uh, those were actually left blank, because I, I could, gave everything else from the tables as a compilation of data from our five benchmarking towns. But the size of illuminated sites, because it was sort of a hot topic at so many meetings, I left blank in the hopes that the board could help me with filling that data in before it was, uh, moved on to the Select Board.
So is it not ready at this point in time to be shared at all with the Select Board to get some?
I need, um.
Need more work. Okay, I understand.
If I had the whole board, just, you can send me updates or, uh, anything like that. If it's, um, clerical errors, I have already been made aware of several of those. I think I accidentally turned off my, my spell check once.
Oh, no.
There's at least one word missing, so I apologize for that. I was, I'm very excited to get it done, and then I sent it out, and I'm like, oh boy.
All right, no, that's fine.
But it's, uh, it's mostly done, you're definitely all of the data in there. I just, if you could at least focus in on the tables, there's four or five tables in there, and they're very small. Um, just make sure that you agree or want to bring those up for discussion at the next meeting.
Very good. So we, we'll, we'll have this as part of our two nineteen agenda.
Okay.
Feb nineteen.
Because the annual report is due the, um, for submission on the twentieth, so I will need the board to vote on it at that time.
Okay.
Okay, very good. New business, um, you all have, uh, the correspondence that we have received. Uh, it is in the correspondence, uh, share drive. I will state that, that, uh, after the last meeting that we had in January.
Yes, on the sixth.
On the sixth, we had received a letter from, uh, Mrs. Schmidt on twenty-six Gardner Road.
Smith.
Smith, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, from Mrs. Smith on Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, regarding Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt, sorry. Uh, and I am just stating here for the fact that we are recognizing the fact that we are in receipt of that letter. That letter was, uh, read by our Chair, and, uh, she did correspond back with the, uh,
Mrs. Smith, yes.
On the matter, and I think there's been some back and forth on this here.
Yes.
Basically, the representation of the status of.
Her property.
Of her property.
Right.
And so at this point in time, I let, I let that be, uh, and we can discuss it further, if it, discussion, further discussion is so required on the, on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Uh, item number six, we have matters not reasonably anticipated by the Chair. At this point in time, I have none. Uh, I do not see anybody here else, but I've opened it up if there's something that you, gentlemen, or Christina, you think that we need to entertain here. That being the case, we can close this item. On the old business, I do, I'm seeing that the gravel pits, the used grant, uh, proposal, which was sent on twelve, uh, six, there's not been any updates as of yet. And I believe Christina, you checked with the town administrator on the thirteenth?
Yes.
And there's no new info?
No, no info.
At, at this time?
I think we're just waiting to find out if, you know, how that goes forward. If we get the grant for it, then the report will have to be written, and that'll be probably quite a few months, just like the DLTA grant.
Right.
Okay, uh, Christina, I believe there's been a, uh, some updates that you may have on the response letters, uh, response to intention letters, uh, that we have heard from Land Marking Associates, and there some back and forth discussions with regards to their responsibilities on post-solar field, right?
Yes, um, Landmark is, oh boy, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, I was just gonna say, can you provide us context?
Yes, uh, Landmark Associates is the one who owns the solar field on Pitterville Road. And, um, I got in touch with them, just asking them basically to make sure, uh, that they had it in their plan that once the solar field is done, cause it was never reverted from a gravel pit to usable land before it went to a solar field. So we had sent them the letter that we sent every other gravel pit, saying, please remember to reclaim this when you're done. Um, at which point I started getting into discussions with Landmark, who is the owner of the land. And Terraform, who is the Lisi, who is running the solar field, well, I was a little surprised, because all of my data with regards to Pitterville is with Nexamp.
Another corporation.
Not, another corporation, not Terraform.
Oh, wow.
So now we're doing the back and forth of trying to get all the legal documents of this sale between Nexamp and Terraform to make sure that all assets and liabilities were transferred, because we do have a decommissioning fee on hand for Nexamp. So unless those legal documents state that all assets and liabilities were transferred, we may have to end up giving that money back to Nexamp and then getting Terraform to give us another check. So it's a little bit of a
Right.
kerfluffle at the moment. Perfluffle at the moment.
So it's part of the sale that took place from one corporation to the other, that is Nexamp to Terraform?
Yes, we just need a doc their document of sale that states that all assets and liabilities were transferred, at which point that means um Terraform owns the decommissioning fee. And they own the special permit, which is the most important thing. They need to own to the fact that they've agreed to all the points that we had in our special permit. With regards to um not just how they're implementing their solar collection, but also.
Last communication with them?
With the Nexamp?
Uh, well, with both parties, in this case Terraform and Nexamp.
Nexamp, I found an email in two thousand thirteen and then Terraform, I just got in touch with them two days ago, so.
And they were not aware that this uh ru- uh this 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 requirement was needed?
They didn't seem to have a copy of the special permit, so again, this we're we're treading lightly and making sure everybody's coming to the table and talking about it.
Right.
And I just wanna make sure they have a couple of copy of the special permit and we have all their documentation as well. So it seems to be going well.
So I think it'd be uh again, we can put this as a an item for the next meeting, so so just keep making sure that we're on top of this here. Fall through the cracks.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Question?
Absolutely, please.
Is there any other solar fields in the same situation?
Um, there, I don't know. At the moment, the only one that we had sort of before the board last year, you'll remember, was when Seaboard went to. Um, True Green. It wouldn't, I don't think it'd be remiss of the board to just put a query, I mean, we know Borrego. We have the two that are owned by Borrego. Um, it might not be remiss of us to make sure that the last one or two are 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 also in the ownership we believe they are.
What if we sent sent a letter to them just saying we any, so this doesn't happen again?
Actually, I think I have been in communication with all of them recently. So I think that, uh, but I will, I can double check.
Hold on, accounted for.
I I believe so, because we've been in touch with ninety one. We've been in touch with ninety five with regards to the Stonewall.
One forty seven.
Borrego is is in, yeah, and then Pitterville and then the other Borrego field.
Gardner.
Yeah. Actually, Gardner Road would be the only one we'd have to check with, but I'm not sure if that is still in possession. Wasn't it Borrego who went there too?
I believe so.
Yeah, so I'll check and make sure. I have a contact with Borrego, I'll check.
I think I think it would be good just to ensure that we've covered all of the fields at this point in time and ensure that there is no uh confusion as to.
Right.
The ownership.
I'm sorry. And if we keep it on our old business next, our next meeting when everybody's here, maybe we we could uh entertain sending a letter out to all of them. If you make a sale of your property, you need to notify everybody of these things.
It is in the special permit of every single one of them, so they should have, no matter if they did or did not.
Right.
So, but yeah, it's a good idea.
Annual protocol on our end, sort of like a start of the year or end of the year reminder. It's it's a process that would potentially be, it's certainly something that we ought to entertain.
Not only that, but some of those solar fields, I believe, were that were within our rights to double check their special permit, to put out a call to them to say, okay, we need a couple thousand dollars. And send Bill Murray out there to make sure you're still operating within the confines of your special permit. That would be the next step, because I believe inspections and and making sure they're adhering to their special permit is in their. Their certificates generate.
Right, uh, the next bullet item on the gravel pits is the Catester Reclamation, which at this point in time, we know that and we are not expecting any updates at this point in time. Given the weather conditions and nothing is going to happen until sometime in the probably late spring, early, well, late spring probably. Um, regarding the solar, uh, no updates on ninety one Williamsville Road uh regarding landscaping. Again, I'm assuming that's weather related primarily. And second is the one forty seven Williamsville Road project, which again, probably no update typically also due to the weather related uh circumstances. Of the season. On the affordable housing, uh, I do understand there's an email discussion between the town administrator and the Habitat. And uh you have some additional information regarding the uh fact, or was it discussed? Because I wasn't here on the last meeting. I know that we originally had uh one lot that had been granted, but it then switched from one lot to the other.
Yes.
Was that was that publicly discussed or?
Yes, at the Board of Selectment meeting, they s- they said that they had a preference for two seventeen as opposed to two twenty. When Habitat for Humanity went out, um, they said that they preferred two seventeen to two twenty because of the la- the slope of the land.
Yeah.
And so it was decided that lot two seventeen on Ragged Hill Road would be the one, sorry, parcel would be, um, two seventeen would be the one on that they would transfer. I happen to know that there's an RFP, a request for proposal, that's going to be sent out um very soon with regards to. So we can't just give it to Habitat for Humanity. We have to put out a proposal and see what other um organizations might be interested in developing that as an affordable housing.
Yeah, so we do know that Habitat is definitely interested. It is just making sure that it is a level playing field.
Be awesome to get that rolling, that'd be really good.
I'm sorry?
Be really good if we can get that off the ground.
And yes, and I mean, no little effort from Ms. Mrs. Alice, uh, from Alice. Uh, she she did a lot of legwork there, so. A- absolutely fantastic, so I I appreciate that.
I believe that there'll also be a visit by the town administrator to one of our meetings in the next few months with regards to possible tax title properties for affordable housing.
Awesome.
That's sort of a new notification, it wasn't.
I know they were trying to work it out because of the funding, right?
There's nothing, there's nothing final. There's nothing, uh, but he said he would like to come before the board in the next couple of months. And so I'll be putting him on a future agenda.
Excellent. Um, next item I have here are the bylaw and subdivision updates, uh, signed by law draft, uh.
Which we already discussed.
Which we did basically discuss at this point in time.
Okay.
And then uh we do have a uh potential for a letter to the Board of Selectment on regarding the earth removal. And so I'll just read this out loud here. Uh, the planning board administrator, uh, uh, at the direction of uh Alice, who's uh the the chair. Uh, she drafted a letter to the Board of Selectmen regarding the uh earth removal by law. And proposing possible changes. Uh, this letter will need to be reviewed and voted upon before it can be sent. Uh, which is basically the earth removal letter to the Board of Selectmen that you have in your packages and you have uh available. It is in your share drive. Now, if the Board of Selectmen approves the general bylaw change, the planning board would also be responsible for updating the earth removal rules and regulations. Which also contain a five hundred cubic yard exemption. I had a very brief chat with Christina about the technicality on this here. Uh, because as you explained, and I think it would be behoove uh not only us. But maybe somebody who's interested in hearing about this here as to why the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we have to go through a Board of Selectmen and the impact that then it has on us.
Yes, about ten years ago, and this is um what I was told, um, the planning, the then planning board decided to move the earth removal bylaws. From the zoning bylaws into the general bylaws. Uh, I'm not exactly sure exactly why that transpired, but um that's what happened. Because of that, the planning board is no longer, we can't submit a warrant to change them. The only people who can change the general bylaws are the Board of Selectmen. So in order to change that five hundred cubic yard exemption, as we discussed at previous meetings. We would have to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen requesting that they make the change. Um, keep in mind that the Board of Selectmen, every five years per charter, does a general review of all bylaws. So even if they don't put it in this year, they may put it forward to their their, but we did make in that email or the letter, if you read it. The concept that this is preserving our, you know, environmental.
Mm-hmm.
Um, character, but also uh keeping any further damage from being done. So I don't know if they'll do it this year, but. I know they think they have their next one in twenty twenty two, is their full review of all bylaws and charter.
So at this point, uh, a letter has been drafted.
Yes.
By Alice, uh, a letter that you have a copy of in your uh share drives. Uh, I'm not sure if you have had a chance to read it. And if not, I will basically ask if you can take a moment and read that. And uh maybe you can point directly as to which file that is, because it would help uh.
Um, the name of the file is, it's actually not in correspondence, it's under files.
It's on the files.
And it's called Letter to Board of Selectmen.
Got it.
Regarding earth removal bylaw. In your shared drive.
Yeah, so shared drives.
Yeah, twenty AM.
Planning board documents.
Right here, right?
Yep, click on that. Um, then it was twenty twenty meetings.
Oh, okay.
And then the February fifth meeting. And then it's in there.
Thank you.
Yep. So take a minute to read that, uh, because. Once you read it.
Yeah, we did. I didn't see that.
Any questions? So, uh. I, at this point in time, uh, would like to entertain a motion. Uh, given the fact that Alice uh drafted this letter, I do believe that uh. She understands very clearly what the problems are, which is certainly something we discussed in prior meetings.
Right.
So I'd like to entertain a motion uh for this letter that uh was drafted, that we instruct Alice not only to uh sign it, but then to send it.
I'll make that motion.
To the uh to the Board of Selectmen.
I will second the motion.
Alright, uh, having heard that the motion was uh made and um seconded, I would like to entertain a vote at this point in time. Would you please raise your hand if you are accepting the motion?
Aye.
So we do have unanimous vote here. And so I would ask Christina, please inform Alice that uh today's meeting, we not only reviewed it, but we accept it. And we ask her to sign it and order it to the Board of Selectmen at her earliest possible convene time. Next bullet item I have is this, the warrant articles that are being proposed. Uh, again, Christina has currently drafted the following list of warrant articles. Uh, at the direction of the board. Uh, this is the signed bylaw and the removal uh. Removal of moratorium bylaw, right?
Yes, that's.
Which has expired. Um, and so at this point in time, um. I there's nothing we need to do with regards to this here, right? Except for the fact that we need to just make sure that these are prepped for the warrant.
Yes, well, obviously with the signed bylaw, we have to have a second meeting here for all of us to discuss what goes into it, then we'll have to have a public hearing. If for any reason you decide after that public hearing that the signed bylaw needs major revisions, we'll have to have a second public hearing before it's proposed to the warrant. I mainly put that one in there um to remind you that I have used up thirty six hours of the hundred that was proposed and I would appreciate um further direction. Which is a little bit further down the.
And so at this point in time, uh, for tonight, there is really no additional. Motions or re- re- requests from the board. It is just making us aware of the fact that this has taken place. And that the hours that have been spent versus what is left over, so we're conscious of that.
Yes.
Okay. Should additional hours be required, then we would have to vote for.
Right.
Uh, the additional hours uh that may be added into the budget.
Right, well, the only other thing would be whether, at the moment, I'm not moving forward on any project. So, and um if you wanted me to continue moving forward with writing these, especially considering we have a timeframe. Uh, the other two major uh things that were discussed before this board were the solar bylaw, which was determined that we need an overlay and if we need that, you guys need your training for overlay districts. And then uh cannabis. And I could get started on cannabis and definitely have a working draft ready in time for the warrant. If that was something that the board felt that they would like me to move ahead on.
How do you guys feel about this?
I think we should.
I'd be interested to in to discuss it more, yeah.
But you should, you should have working on a bylaw for it.
Downloading all the um benchmarking towns, obviously, and then comparing them to what we have. Um, uh, the main concern would be things like, as I said, with Gardner. Making sure that we have the concept that it has, with a special permit, it has to be renewed or at least reviewed every three years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they do that so that, uh, like the solar fields, we just don't lose sight of what's going on and 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 fail to see that they're not doing X, Y, and Z according to their special permit.
So it's adding additional. Items to the exist, potentially adding additional items to the bylaw that basically add enforcement or overview and reviews.
Also z- zoning, um, do they have to do berms if they're going to do large fences? Do they have to do? Because they do have to provide their own security. Uh, do they have to have setbacks for large greenhouses, especially in residential zones? Because they are permitted to a certain tier, which is a certain sized greenhouse. So that kind of concept I would be looking for in the benchmarking towns.
I I would ask at this point in time that uh, given where we are. Um, specifically, I mean, the 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 topic of cannabis has surged recently quite quite heavily. I think having that information available to us. Is definitely important.
Okay.
Uh, I do not believe that making a decision without that information is is wise.
Right.
And so I think it would, exactly, I think it would be great to have you uh start putting uh some effort in gathering that information.
Yes.
Getting some comps with other towns that we have.
No, but because um these were the list of items that were discussed as a full board already.
Okay.
So it's just.
You're looking for direction into areas.
Which one.
That that is a very good one for us to start looking into.
Yep.
So that would be greatly appreciated.
Not only that, I was asked by the chair to look into two things. One was the concept of cannabis cafes, because I know that that came up during the whole discussion of cannabis. It turns out that according to the MGL, Hubbardston cannot host a cannabis cafe unless the town takes a vote that they wish to permit them. So nothing in our bylaw currently or any vote we've taken will permit those unless there is a separate vote uh that the town gets to vote on. Uh, at the moment, actually, they're not permitted under the MGL, they're in a test phase. Uh, I think it's about nine host communities are doing them and then the town, the the state will vote on them. But um that was one of the things that came up with regards to whether or not we needed to amend our bylaws in that direction. And the other one was how they could uh retail sales, if they needed to be in any way restricted. The MGL only provides that we can. Limit it to twenty percent of liquor licenses.
Which at this point in time would be zero, because it's less than, I mean, we only have two liquor licenses, right?
Uh, we have more than that. If you look at your um.
Right.
Planning board, I gave you the data.
I'm sorry?
Sorry. I got something from the ABC, I reached out to the ABCC, the Mass ABCC, and we have permitted. Um, and on an annual basis, uh, nineteen.
Oh, I see, okay. And I'm sorry, where is this?
For off off premises, I'm sorry, it's under the name of the file. The name of the file is Report Show. I apologize, I should have renamed that before I put it in there, but it's Report Show, then it says alcohol licenses permitted in hub. But you can't read that when you, when it's just in there. Um, it's actually, um. I'm not pos- it's either on premises retail, which is nineteen, or off premises retail, which is seven. So one or the other of those numbers, um, I I'm still working with the ABCC with regards to understanding them.
So having that information available would be very useful also.
Right, because then it would be twenty percent of seven or twenty percent of nineteen. Obviously, we would have a little bit of discrepancy in that.
Okay. Understanding also what it implies, meaning is there a minimum that has to be allowed potentially?
Yes.
Meaning is zero or is it one?
It's it's one.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't in- inhibit it by saying, oh, no, we only allow seven and twenty percent of, or we only have three and twenty percent of that is zero point.
Right, right, right.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yes, I know. So I'll make sure I have that number.
Understanding what that means is very important to us too. In addition to this here, I believe that you were also seeking to find information from the board as to our availability for the participation in some.
Training.
Training.
Yes, that is further down in administrative matters, which we're actually down to because we already did master plan.
Exactly. So I think it would be good if we can maybe discuss this here, because it also goes into uh part of what we have been discussing about. The impact that it has on some of the warrant items.
Yes.
So, uh, can you give us an overview of what the available trainings are and what kind of um. Commitment you're seeking from the board members, because I do believe that you've already gotten commitments from.
I have, uh, two members of the board have responded to my request with regards to which Saturdays in February that they're um available. To have that training. I've been told that the training maybe is uh be about three hours. And they were gonna try and do it on a Saturday so that everybody could, they wouldn't have to worry about work. Uh, with regards to this, the CTPC did get in touch with me, they do offer Saturdays. Uh, at this point, I'm not sure anyone's available the eighth, I'm not sure we'd get anyone here on the eighth. Um, but the fifteenth, twenty second, and twenty ninth, um, also, I wouldn't mind at this point even querying um what available dates we have in March. Just in case the um people who are offering the training are not available until then. So it's, if you could give me that information now or email it to me as soon as possible, that way I can get these these trainings set up and we can make sure we have a quorum. But it's not just a quorum we want. We wanna try and get as many of you as possible, because it's four hundred dollars.
The more, the better.
The more, the better, exactly.
Have we discussed as to whether or not we were going to extend this here to other boards?
Yes, I was gonna open it up to um the building department, obviously, see if she wanted to come in. Uh, and then I was going to basically open it up. I also went to find out though from the CTPC what their maximum class size was.
How about the ZBA?
The ZBA would probably be interested in overlay as well.
Yeah, I want that board as well.
I was also, if we didn't have a high enough number, and again, I want to talk to the CTPC on what numbers they would be considering. Um, maybe even opening it up to other communities and seeing if they want to split the cost.
There you go.
That would be a very interesting alternative and we could offer the place. It's just a matter of making sure that we have the right that number of people and.
Exactly.
The cost. Is there any particular dates that you two gentlemen have as a opening? Again, knowing that it is a Saturday, it is three hours. Did they give a timeframe as to when they typically do this morning, afternoons, or?
She, they didn't say, they just said Saturdays were available.
Okay.
So if it's, it doesn't have to be like eight AM on a Saturday.
Twenty second is actually like the last Saturday of the February vacation, so I don't know if that's admissible. The twenty ninth is fine with me.
Yeah, I could do the twenty ninth or the seventh of March, those ones are available for me.
Okay.
Okay, so you have now seventh or twenty ninth or twenty sec, oh, well. So it's really the twenty ninth or the seventh are the dates that we're talking about, right? Twenty nine seems to be like the 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 num- the the date that we're circling into.
That's enough notice for me to get child caring.
Given the fact that Alice has indicated her availability and I've indicated my availability.
In any Saturday in February.
So Craig would be the only additional individual we would wanna make sure that we can try to get him.
Regards to that.
Again, weather permitting.
Weather permitting.
Okay, so why don't we, at this point in time, see if we can find out what their availability is for the twenty ninth?
Yep.
And I would suggest that you uh see if you can get Craig at least to understand that this is maybe the date that we're targeting, understanding, you know, whether permitting he can make it.
Yep.
And uh putting feelers out from for other uh. Other groups within the town to uh potentially attend.
Right, I I wanted to make sure we had a solid date though before we sent that out.
So it looks like the twen- the twenty ninth of this month would probably be the.
If they're available.
And the only reason we can do it like that this year is because it's a leap year.
Right.
Are you gonna send out a final on the?
What I'll do is I'll I'll wait until, I'll I'll make sure all of you are made aware, it when the twen- twenty ninth is confirmed, and then I'll send it out to the other boards.
Yeah, why don't we pencil it in?
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Here's my.
As long as the, as long as the trainer is available, yes. As long as the, as long as a trainer is available, yes.
Yeah, let's pencil it in, so CTP uh CTPC.
Yep.
TPC, and again, just to be clear, uh if we were doing a Saturday training, we would be doing it here, or is it?
Yes, it would be here.
Okay.
Speaking of training, I wanted to bring up one other training that um Alice um wanted everyone to be aware of. There's a CPA Affordable Housing and um and CPA conference that's going on Saturday, March fourteenth. And she didn't know if anyone else would be interested in attending, if uh they are, I believe it was forwarded to the group, but I can forward it again.
What's the date?
It is the fourteenth of March, and it is in Marlborough.
Oh, I don't, be on the town.
And it is from eight thirty AM to three PM. She said if anyone were interested to contact her and get carpool out. Uh there is a uh cost associated, breakfast and lunch will be provided, but the cost to attend is thirty dollars and it might be something that the board just gets asked later to reimburse those who go, so it would be out of your pocket.
Okay.
But I wanted to bring that up as another possible training um for the board. Oh, well, you probably won't be coming back.
Lucky you.
Yeah, yeah, what?
Let me put it this way, uh from my perspective, I would, again, I'm I'm gonna pencil it in.
Yep.
Uh I will not be able to contribute with uh uh the logistics of transportation, because I'm, I I I'm not in town that day.
Mm-hmm.
But can get to Marlborough.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay.
Well, she said that it would just be nice to have somebody there that sitting at the table, so you guys could both talk about it.
Absolutely, no, no, I I I think, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think this will be excellent, especially now that we are looking very seriously at affordable housing.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think it's great.
And it is becoming a very important topic in um in the news and in our community, so I'd be good to.
It's better to have more of a plan than we have now and the work that's been started, if it if it all plays out, it it makes it much better for us. And help somebody out at the same time.
Okay, great.
Also, one really good news in administrative matters, there's a good chance that by the end of February, I will have our operational procedures manual ready for a draft. It's sixteen pages now, and it is about ready to go out.
Oh, that's good.
Very good.
I've been busy.
To sixteen.
I know, right, sorry. Trying to keep it short, so you guys might read it. The only other thing I have here is signatures on the warrants, i.e. you guys.
Yes.
I spent this money, so we should probably sign for it, but these have already been paid out, but this is for your knowledge of of where the money is going.
Okay, and just to be clear, you only need a majority of the, well, you need, you need a quorum.
Correct.
Actually, I don't need a signature at all, technically, I just need to make you aware of it, this is for our file, it's the concept that it's been presented to you, you understand that these monies have been spent.
But you're still asking for the signatures from each one of us.
Yes, just to put it in our, in our file.
Just to show that we've seen it too.
Yes, and also we've said it at public meeting, these monies were spent. Um actually, two of the warrants only have um you guys paying me for what I've been doing on the uh.
Well, thanks for attaching the receipts.
Yep, and also for stamps, um. But all these were reviewed by the town accountant and paid, uh because I'm I'm technically a a official signatory for all vendor payments, like staples and.
Did we talk before about why doesn't the town have the machine to do all the, instead of buying the stamps?
That is a hot topic, actually, currently under discussion in in the town office. We are currently looking into uh stamps dot com and a couple of other USPS options with regards to that.
Okay.
Uh in the meantime, what I've started doing with any um special permit is requesting a check by the uh applicant. It's made out directly to the United States Postal Service, so that I do not have to front the money.
There you go.
Bright idea.
Well, I had to find out something.
I like that, I like that, I like that. Um I know that we 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 were we we talked.
Speaking of which, that's to John, that's actually on that topic. That's your fourteen cents and change, I accidentally had to write a check for fourteen cents too much, that's my bad, for his special permit.
Oh boy.
How dare you?
I know, right? So yes, that's fourteen cents and then I'm below.
Okay.
I'm meticulous.
Good, well, thank you. Uh I just wanna quickly go back onto the first uh further discussion regarding the solar marijuana, I do know that we did quite a little bit of discussion about the cannabis. Uh did we, was there anything you did want to also include about the solar, because I, it does say something about uh the study that had been done by places, would you like to please elaborate on that?
Well, there are two, two things, one was the fact that um there's a file in your uh shared drive called Large Scale Solar Projects. Uh Alice asked me to put in the total property acreage of each uh solar site in town with the concept that some um local benchmark communities have a minimum acreage that a solar field has to be put on. And it's usually like ten acres, that way, if you have a hundred feet on each side, you know, you don't want them on a nice two acre plot, you know?
Right.
Uh cause then you can see right through it, but most of the acreages um are, you'll notice, over fifteen acres. Uh the two thirty two and two four neat Gardner together are thirty six, cause keep in mind, those are way back from the road and they're adjoining plots. So we call them two separate fields, but technically they're one. So she wanted me to put that in here, just so that we had that for future discussion. And then the other thing is, I was looking through my files, and I would love to say that I've been through every single file in my um in my drawers and in my computer and everything since I started, but I just haven't had the time. Um but I did find an interesting uh report done up by Bill Murray on May fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, which is also in your shared drive, called Assessment for the Installation of Photovoltaic Solar Facility in Hubbardston, Mass. And what this was, was um Bill Murray was asked to come in and assess all town sites with regards to where solar could be put. Um so he did a little bit of what we're looking to do possibly with an overlay, cause we can't have an overlay district that says it can only go here, but the wires won't support it. Cause we would have to do something like this kind of assessment for areas of the map that we were considering. But he did this one, and I thought it would be a good starting place to say, okay, here's um like you'll notice on page fourteen, there's a sites deemed as good map. Um a lot of this is really good information, and I wanted to make sure it was available to all of you, cause most of you weren't on the board in two thousand fifteen. So, uh again, this was only done for town owned sites, he didn't do it in general areas, but I thought it would be a good place for us to start with regards to the concept of of solar.
Okay, um quick technical thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um is there an easy way for us to?
Page down?
No, 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 landscape this here, instead of.
Uh this is a really rough copy.
No, I'm just saying, you know, viewing it this way.
Uh we could print it, that would probably be your best bet.
I I was just, no, I I can certainly do that, and I just did not want to do any kind of printing if it's unnecessary, but I will be happy to do so. If there's no way that we can just flip it over.
Regardless of this isn't a an official, I don't actually have Adobe uh professional to flip each page, uh and you can't do it on your Google Chromebook, but if you have any kind of Adobe reader at home, you should be able to do that, no problem.
So I should be able to export this here and then.
Yes, onto your home computer, Chrome just really, Chrome won't even really support Adobe, what you're getting right now is it's it's opening in the cloud, because.
Oh, okay.
So.
I I'll try that, and if not, I'll just go ahead and print it, it's not a big deal, it's just a matter of not having to print if it's not necessary, I want to.
Right.
No, I understand.
Thank you. All right, um I think we've covered pretty much everything, all the way up to uh section eight inclusive.
Mm-hmm.
Uh we're on
Nine.
Section nine, which is public commons, we do not have any uh individuals who are present here. Um is there anything that we wanna state here publicly that should be done? Uh we would like to.
I think things are going well.
No?
I think things are going well.
Excellent, I I think they are too, and um at this point in time, uh I would like to ensure that we are announcing that our next planning board meetings, uh at least the two that I'm aware of, uh immediately and right now, uh in the near future, we have a planning board meeting that is scheduled on the nineteenth of February. And another one, which is also uh taking place in, but that's taking place in the first Wednesday in uh March, which is on March fourth. Again, all these meetings typically take place at six thirty in the evening. Try to be as punctual as possible, obviously, unless there is a slight delay because of some technical reasons or some weather delays or whatever else. So we'll 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 keep to that. Um I thank you very much for attending tonight, I appreciate uh the listeners and everybody who is also part of our uh online community and uh video community. At this point in time, I don't think there's anything else for us to cover, unless I'm missing something.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm. I'm just glad to do this here, I at this point in time would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second the motion.
Very good, may I have a show hands uh on this motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and uh good evening and uh good night, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent meeting, thank you.
Hour and a half, good meeting.
Yeah, awesome meeting, yes.
It was good to be able to do this here and uh I consider it, the lights out.
Yep.